I wear two hats. Firstly, I'm wearing the hat of a civic organization known as the Guyana Association of Georgia. And the second hat, I stand here as a representative of the government of Guyana. Now, my two questions to you. When I first moved to DeKalb County 25 years ago, DeKalb County was known as the international county. Throughout the years, it has diminished that international flavor. In Fulton County, we have 54 consulates. We only have two consulates in DeKalb County. Now, Mr. CEO, my question to you is, would you be supportive of having more international consulates in DeKalb County? And let me use an example. I know you will point it to the Board of Education. If perhaps the Glen Haven School removes from the schooling area and it becomes vacant and available, would you advocate that that school become a complex for, let's say, a Caribbean community complex, like the types of complexes they have in New York? If you go to Manhattan, in the Lower Manhattan area, you have the Chinatown. If you go to Queens, you've got the Hillside Avenue Caribbean Community. So, two questions you serve. Would you advocate and/or support the usage of any of the available schools for lease to perhaps the Guyana Association whereby we can have a number of Caribbean consulates establish themselves there? Now, the second thing is, on the international front...
Okay, you...okay. Let me...I'm trying to keep all these questions in, but...
The first has to do with...
And we got a long line, but...
The first has to do with your advocating usage of the schools they make use of.
Yeah, let me answer that. I absolutely support having more consulates and doing whatever we can. I pushed really hard to bring in an economic development director. Charles Watley is here. Charles, stand up. We were meeting today about some international affairs for DeKalb County. I know we have one of the Caribbean consulates, I believe, from Jamaica in DeKalb County, who I've met with, and also the Mexican consulate, who I've also met with. I've met with some of the other nearby consulate generals. Peru is here in DeKalb County, I believe, and Dunwoody also. And I've met with a number...we've had a number of delegations from different countries come to DeKalb County, and we meet with them in the CEO's office. There are a number of international groups, such as the National Association of Chinese Americans. I was at their big event about two or three Saturdays ago. And so, I absolutely agree with you that DeKalb County has a reputation for being Georgia's diverse county. And Gwinnett County is trying to challenge us on that. I believe in using shared facilities and making use of those facilities that are no longer or that are being underutilized. And I would certainly work with the school system, as I do, to provide any facilities, whether it's a public building or otherwise, to make it available to your delegations. So, I appreciate your public service, and if you want to sit down with...I'll have Mr. Watley come over and get your information. We'll talk about how we can start to work on it.
Thank you very much. I look forward to meeting you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Charles, would you give with him? Yes, sir.
Hi, CEO. Thank you for this opportunity, and I wanted to say hello to all of the guests as well. My name is Dwayne Hartman. I live in a community...I live about six miles from here, but only about three miles from the proposed site of Greenco. I am one of three residents initially that went to the meeting July 5th at Antioch Church. There's only three of us there, but it was about maybe 18, 15, 18 representatives from Greenco in that room. I was absolutely offended and appalled based upon what they were suggesting that they were going to do here. I was pissed off based on their actions, their cockiness, and their arrogance. It was as if they were going to force this down our throats and that we didn't have a vote on it. We didn't have an opinion on it, and that it was already a done deal, and we all know. And I got some notes here, and I won't go through all of them because I took copious notes and sent them out to folk on my email list. I was kind of responsible for organizing the meeting at Rock Chapel and so on and so forth. Last week, we met with the DeKalb Community Council. They voted 6-0 to deny this. Now, the will of the people is, we don't want this in our neighborhood. You've already spoke tonight, and you said that you were going to listen to the will of the people. That was one thing you said. Another thing you said, well, crime is down and all of that, and that's wonderful. What we're concerned about is the quality of life in our area. You also stated that there was going to be a soapbox derby located in the area. Is that going to be over there by YMCA in that area?
Well, okay. I want to make sure you get all your questions.
And the reason why I say that is because that's going to be right next door from where this proposed facility is.
Let me say this, Ms. Hartman. You have every right to be concerned, and I don't blame you at all. And what I was saying earlier, I was asked a question. I was trying to make it clear that the will of the people should be adhered to, and you need to make your voices heard and make sure they're heard to the Board of Commissioners because the CEO doesn't have jurisdiction over matters of zoning and land use.
I understand.
This is one of those. This is one of those. So, and it's encouraging that the community council has voted it down 6 to 0.
Correct.
So, I think you're off to a good start, but you need to continue to lobby the Board because ultimately, they're the ones who's going to make the decision. I don't even get to make a recommendation on it.
Okay.
Unlike a budget, I don't get to make, you know, any recommendation, but I do think it's important that your voice is heard. And what I would do to encourage you is to continue to lobby not just the commissioners who represent you, but all seven commissioners because it takes four out of seven to decide whether this is going to happen or not. And it's in your community, and you have a lot at stake.
Well, CEO, with all due respect, is also in your community too because don't think you won't get that order too. And if you all remember how I used to smell when you went down 285 to the airport, that would be over here. This is what we're talking about. The proposed site is only a half mile from Rock Chapel Elementary School, which is ridiculous. And Rock Chapel from here is only three miles. So, this whole area will be affected negatively. And we talk about the impact on air and quality of air and infecting lives. There's some real dangerous stuff that we're dealing here. And also, in my investigation, what I found out also, Greenco is almost kind of like a front. There's another company behind Greenco, and I don't know if you guys even knew that or not. So, be careful in terms of the decision. Districts four and five will be impacted tremendously. Okay? So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. And if you'll give me about two minutes, I'll share some of the...
Well, it's 8:15, and you see the line of people. Is there any information you can provide?
What I do have is, I have in my briefcase now, I have about maybe 400 or 500 signatures on a petition. And for anybody that wants to sign this petition tonight, if you will meet me in the back, you can sign the petition. We will be presenting it to the Board of Commissioners next month on that 4 Tuesday.
And you're welcome to do that. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Okay, I'll get you next. I'll come back and I'll get you. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Fantasia Moss, and I would like to know if you could give yourself a grade for the CEO position during the last four years. What would that be and why?
Well, let me put it to you like this, Fantasia. You know, gee, it's a long time since I've been in school. But, you know, let's talk about what we said we'd do, and let's talk about what we've done. You know, again, I started out tonight by saying that, you know, I would listen to the concerns of the people, and I think we've done an extraordinary job of that. I've talked about almost 50 town hall meetings we've had just since becoming CEO, and you can add probably at least another 50 when we were campaigning for the office. So, we've continued to govern as we campaign. That was promise number one. Promise number two, we said we would make the priorities of the people the priorities of their county government, and we've listened very closely. So, I can pretty much tell you what those priorities are. The people want a sustainable government with strong finances. We inherited a government that was overspending, and we had to rein that in. So, first of all, you know, the economy was failing. We had to cut our expenses just like you do at home, and we had to make the necessary, really tough decisions. We had to consolidate departments. We had to...can y'all...it's a little bit distracting because I'm trying to get Ms. Moss's. I'm talking to Dr. Samama and Director Miller. I want to get to her question, okay? So, we said that we would go out and fix the county's finances, and we did that by consolidating departments. We did that by downsizing the government. We did that by eliminating unnecessary services. And yet, the essential services of this county government continue to go forward, the things that people care about, public safety. We've said that would be a top priority. And while we're going to continue to go to work, I mean, we proposed two police stations along Memorial Drive. Despite the fact that the commission voted those two down, we're still going to put two new police stations in South DeKalb, one in North DeKalb. Violent crime is down 36%. Property crimes are down 27%. We said despite a tough economy, we will go out and get federal dollars. We get $175 million in federal dollars based upon our relationship with the Obama administration. We brought it back home. That's more than many states get right here in DeKalb County. And what are we doing? We're rebuilding our street skates. I mentioned Memorial Drive and Canola Road and Beaufort Highway, two new rec centers, a new YMCA, seven new libraries with one more on the way. So, we're really adding to the quality of life. And now, with a job stimulus program that's been talked about nationally, where we're going to be upgrading our infrastructure system and putting the DeKalb County citizens back to work. And then, I think even more significant than all of that, and then I'm just giving you an overview, we're partnering with the school system. We're working in a collaborative fashion with our superintendent and our school board members that are here in a way that DeKalb County has never seen because we know that so goes the school system, so goes DeKalb County. So, I don't know. You might give me an A. You might give me a 90. You know, different schools, great...I don't know. How would you grade me, Dr. Atkinson? You know, I tell you what, I let the people be the judge of the grade, okay? But I think...I let the people be the judge...okay. Well, she asked a tough question. I know y'all want to get in, but I let the people be...hold on one second. I let the people be the judge of that, but it's a record we're very proud of, but our work's not finished, okay? Thank you very much, Ms. Moss. Yes, Gina, how are you?
Good evening. I'm Gina Mangum. You know me. I've been a DeKalb resident for 22 years. I'm not going to revisit the Greenco issue. Mr. Hartman did a great job. My concern is bigger, meaning I don't know why we are the dumping ground here in South DeKalb. It seems that the county is very friendly towards projects that are supposed to provide economic development but are really a threat to the health and safety of our neighbors. We've got four landfills here. The county's being sued, or the Board of Commissioners is being sued now for the biomass project, which of course is wasting funds to defend it. And I guess my question is, well, first of all, it's not true that your office does not have anything to do with it. The planning board does make a recommendation. The planning committee is part of the staff. It comes under the county's purview. So, and it's my understanding that there was a contract with the biomass folks between the county before they even applied for the zoning. So, I understand the difference between the CEO's office and the commissioner's office, but more importantly, why do people feel like they can come to South DeKalb with these projects?
Well, let me say this, Gina. The administration has not supported these initiatives. These are private initiatives, and sometimes they're driven by land availability, a lot of other reasons. But the decisions that are made, now, you understand, there is a planning department that reviews and makes a recommendation.
And that's part of your staff, correct?
Well, the CEO's office doesn't interfere with that, and the Board of Commissioners doesn't interfere with that. And wait, wait a minute. Is Andrew Baker still here? Okay. Okay. And I want you to talk about how that's done. You can come up front and talk about how that's done because we don't interfere with those decisions because those are professional...they have professional planners in their office, and those are professionally driven decisions. So, I want you to be clear. Yes, we go out and hire the people who work in that department, but we don't engage or influence the decisions that are only recommend...wait, hold on.
I understand that, but quite frankly, you are insulting me because I understand how the process works.
Yeah, but everybody here does...
The bigger issue is, can we have a moratorium in DeKalb for these projects that are a threat to our health and safety, understanding that we already bear the brunt of a lot of the landfills and other projects that always come here? Now, we understand that there's a lot of available land, and that's why it's attractive for people to apply. But we need to let them know that we are not friendly towards any more supposedly economic engines that are going to be a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of our families.
All right. Now, I appreciate that, but now that you've asked a question, I want an opportunity to answer without interruption. And the answer is, I want to clarify what you said about the administration being friendly and versus the county being friendly to these types of folks who come down and want to do these projects in South DeKalb County. Now, the process is it goes to a planning department. It goes through a planning commission, which is made up of citizens, okay? Appointed citizens, not influenced...I've never influenced anybody on the planning commission about what recommendation to make, but ultimately, the decision is made by the Board of Commissioners, okay? So, understand, the Board of Commissioners is an elected body, who each of you, just as you elect me, you elect them. And the CEO does not have a say-so in what the final decision on Greenco will be, the biomass plant, or any of those items. And do you want to talk about how the professional recommendations are done?
Sure. First off, one of the reasons why there's an attraction to the areas is because the area is already zoned M2, which is the most intense zoning district that we have. So, there's an attraction for people that wanted to develop land, go to the areas where they have that existing zoning. So, that's one of the things. Also, in the plan that was adopted in 2006, it actually identified the areas for industrial development. And so, again, that's the guiding plan and the vision for the county. So, that's where it says that we want industrial type uses to happen. But there are several points for the public to get involved. There's a community council meeting, and on the Greenco property project, actually, the community council recommended denial. So, the next step of that is on March 6th, and it goes to the planning commission, again, an appointed body. So, again, there's an opportunity for the public to comment and say they're in opposition to it. And so, then, there's a recommendation that comes from the planning commission.
But I have seen the planning commission vote up things that are voted down by the community.
We're not going to do this like this. You've had an opportunity to speak, and he's going to have an opportunity to answer. And we're going to do everything decently and in order.
But you're not answering my question. What you're telling me is what the process is, and I want to know if you're willing to put a moratorium on projects that are a health, a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of this community. I'm tired of going to every meeting to try and vote things down when the commission...when the planning committee ignores what we say.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
And when will you do it?
Okay. I will work with staff, but that is then going to have to be voted on by the Board of Commissioners. You understand that, okay?
All right. Great. But you will make the proposal.
I'll sit down with my staff. I mean, you've asked a very general question, Gina, and I will sit down with the staff to see if there's a way that we can legally address the issues that you're concerned about. You've asked specifically whether a moratorium can be drafted that will protect the health, safety, and welfare. We draft those moratoriums, I mean, those kind of resolutions all day long, and I don't have a problem with doing it now. I did it as a commissioner. I'll do it as CEO. But understand, it's got to be done in a way that it's legal and that it's appropriate, and then it will have to be voted on by the Board of Commissioners, okay?
I'll be happy to work on it with you.
Okay. Okay. And he'll work with you. Don't walk away. Don't walk away. Stay right here. Okay. Yes, sir.
How you doing? My name's Michael Cooper. Been here since...been in this area, Rock Bridge, since 1995. And I'm, you know, doing a good job, as far as I know. I'm just going to ask something simple. I've been on this side of DeKalb County, like the lady said, the water's edge. It looks like this side of DeKalb got overlooked, especially when it comes to police presence. I'm serious. Police presence. Now, I know Stone Mountain...my address say Stone Mountain, but I know Stone Mountain Police is not able to come, but so far, not on this end of Rock Bridge. So, that's...which means, which means, we don't get Stone Mountain presence, even though my address say Stone Mountain, 300087. We need a precinct over here. We need something...we need a mini station. I mean, I'm serious. When I moved over here, it was like, who's in the country? When I went with my wife, moved over here, first moved over here. Before this school was built, before any of these schools were built, I felt like I was like in the middle of the country or somewhere like in a rural area. Now, it's a police presence that need to be over here, not knocking the police, not listen...listen before you cut me off.
No, I'm not going to. I'm just letting you know, we got three minutes.
But not knocking what the police do, or the DeKalb County Police, what they do, what they stressed out. And I'm going to ask the question. What about a mini station on this side of DeKalb County? On the Rock Bridge end, on the close to the Gwinnett side, red there, because as soon as you cross Gwinnett, it's red there. You got a mini police station red there. I mean, that's a simple question.
And I appreciate it, and I wasn't cutting you off. I'm just letting everybody know, and I just remembered, I said that you have five more minutes, so not three minutes, but we have eight minutes. But thank you for your question, Mr. Cooper. Let me answer two things. Number one, the Stone Mountain Police, you're right, they are only for the city of Stone Mountain. Most of us live in unincorporated DeKalb County. DeKalb County Police serves this area. Chief, if you want to add anything to what I'll say, but you can confirm, and I don't know if Director Miller...Director Miller still here? We actually had a proposal to put a police...Mr. Cooper, I want you to hear this. I actually proposed to put a police precinct, and we had the funds, some of that $175 million in stimulus funds.
Yes, sir.
We were going to use to put a police precinct here. The problem is, the commission that represents this area wouldn't support it.
Because this area has grown. This area has grown a lot in the last 10 years.
Absolutely. So, I want you to know...
This area has grown a lot.
I want you to know that there was a proposal that came from the CEO's office...
I'm listening.
...to put a police precinct right down Memorial Drive closer to this area, okay? Not on the Gwinnett County line where you proposed, but closer to the area, and it was voted down by the Board of Commissioners.
But you be on Stone Mountain Loton, you're close to this side.
All right. But Director Miller, you remember what I'm talking about. Chief, you remember what I'm talking about. We had a proposal to put a police precinct here, okay? So, it got voted down, and now there's one going on Canola Road that's being built, and there's another one in South DeKalb, one on Flick's Mill. But the one that should have been on East, you know, DeKalb...
I'm talking about on this end, on this end of DeKalb, on this side, close to us.
I think I'm talking about the same thing, sir. I'm talking about the same thing because we know we have a problem with the Tucker precinct, okay? All right. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
About all I'd like to add to that about a precinct is something I want you to remember about police services. We don't operate like the fire department. Our men and women don't sit around a police precinct waiting to be dispatched to a call. They're out on patrol. If we look to put another precinct in, it's manpower, it's obviously financing as well, but we don't sit there and wait for a call and then run out and get in the car and go to the call. So, a police precinct, although a building would give you a facility here, doesn't necessarily mean you're going to have police sitting in it. Same thing with a substation or a mini precinct. We don't run those 24/7 like we do a full-size precinct where there are people staffed. Yes, and we did. We worked with the CEO. We were looking at the old Ford dealership on Memorial Drive at one point. We've looked at a number of facilities, and all of them have been knocked down.
About whom?
The Commissioners.
You're right. At the 2010 Board of Commissioners Retreat, we gave them a package of a lot of different public safety projects, including new precincts. And one of the Commissioners mentioned that that need to be a feasibility study and need to be vetted with the public, and basically, they thumbed their nose at us and told us that we don't want to hear what you have to say. So, we've tried, and we'll continue to try. We're going to just resubmit the same proposals again.
Mr. CEO, my name is Bernard Floyd. I live in the Southland, and I'm concerned...in fact, I've been trying to get a mic for some time, so I got a few other questions besides the original one that I hate. I'm not going to be alone. My first concern is on Gateway Boulevard. I'm concerned about those potholes right there on Gateway Boulevard. I look at other neighborhoods and I see, you know, blacktop being refined and finished. And all we are able to get there is just repair, and it's there for about two or three months, and then potholes back again. So, I wanted to know, is it that, can we get blacktop refurbished in that area? All right. Another question I wanted to ask. I was concerned about Rock Bridge Road and also down La Thonia Stone Mountain Road. Going down the road, I look and see all of those tree limbs. Oh, it's just dangerous. Look like anytime, something might fall and hit your car. So, is it any possible way that we probably could get some repair service with those limbs across the road like the...I hope you understand what I'm saying.
I'm going to ask Ted Reinhardt, can you get...tell me your name, sir? Mr. Floyd, so we can get those addresses where those are located, and we'll begin to take a look at them and see whether, what kind of repair we're going to have to be able to do, okay? Absolutely. Yeah. All right. I'm going to look out for you. Yes, sir.
Mr. CEO, glad to be here tonight. I'm Sherman Dudley. Been a resident of DeKalb all my life. Deacon of Big Medical Road Baptist Church of La Thonia, Pastor Bishop Marvin E. Powell. My concerns is several things, and I'll make it short, is that I lives off of Pleasant Hill Road and 124 near Norris Lake. Five years ago, there was five fatalities there at Norris Lake and Humphreys. One DeKalb County Police Officer got killed as well. They set the helicopter down and airlifted the people to the hospital, okay? I've been working with the roads and drains for over seven years. Ms. Patrice thinks she want to return to leave. We had a grant study there coming out of our neighborhood, which we live in the Sierra Highlands. You got school buses coming out there at Barnes Lake. You come over there here, you don't see. So, if a school bus is coming out, all that's doing is, one day, it's going to have a bad accident there. So, they did a grant study at Humphreys and Norris Lake. It's got passed, and I was promised that it was going to be a street light put there. They're going to have to do some study, but I never hear nothing back from them. That's number one. Number two is, if you go out Norris Lake when the storm and flood happened years ago, all those trees are just over in that nice river, big tree just over in the river. On Norris Lake Road, trees have fallen constantly. I was probably went out for two and a half hour last week. Someone going to get really serious, more than one kid one day. I don't know if that accounted. Should go out there and take a survey and go through that area and see what's going on. Number three is, and I'll be through, five years ago, Channel 5 did a survey on my house and several homes in Sierra Highlands. Well, we getting blasting from the forge down on 124, the forge, Rock Quarry. We all got substan tanks, and when you hear that blasting, it's shaking all of our homes. My ceilings are cracked, other people's ceilings are cracked. And the forge came to a meeting at the Malu's building with us. They got angry with me because I brought Channel 5 out, okay? I'm concerned about our county. And that is the reason why they want to put that Greenco on that land, and all that. There's going to be a deterioration and going to cause more problems. So, I'm just hoping that everybody in this area, in this room, vote against that. Vote against that because it's going to be very, very dangerous.
But the people get to vote against it. And I know you want everybody in this room to speak out, and that's a good thing. But the people going to get to vote are the members of the Board of Commissioners. So, make sure that you let your voices be heard to them.
Right. And then I do, I would like, if you could, find someone that really take a tour through Norris Lake, get to see how bad that is.
I'll come out there myself, and Ted, would you come over here and get his information? I'll come out there myself, and Ted, would you come over here and get his information? We'll go out there together. We've toured a number of neighborhoods.
Appreciate that.
Can you come over here and meet with him and get his information? I know I'm working you tonight, but, you know, that's the nature of what we do. And we'll come out there, okay? Thank you very much. Tell Bishop Fowler I said hello. Okay, yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Austin McGuffey. And just reviewing some of the literature that I was provided with today, taking a look around the room, I become concerned about what the progression is of our youth in DeKalb County, and what efforts are you and your administration making to engage the youth in the decision-making here?
I'll do it real quick, because we talked a lot about that. I've answered two or three questions already tonight, but again, we're working on a number of projects with the school system. I really appreciate your question. We're working with our young people through our Police Athletic League Plus program. We've got a basketball league that going to the playoffs now. You've heard me talk about my plans to, that is before the Board of Commissioners right now, to do a soapbox derby track to teach science, technology, engineering, and math, to our summer program that we have with the school system. Also, an extension of our STEM program, our two new rec centers and the programs. One is intergenerational, so it's, you know, for young people, all the way, you know, up to chain to seniors, some very good programs. We've got a new YMCA that we're building, and the Y will operate at discounted rates for our citizens that's going forward right now. And I think also significantly is that we are working, I do an award, and this year, it's going to be done in conjunction with the Champion Newspapers, called the CEO's Community Heroes Awards. And we always recognize a young person who's making a significant contribution to his or her community, and so, I would encourage you, because right now, you can get a Champion Newspaper. I think the application process has opened up. Fill out an application, you can nominate one of your peers, or you can nominate yourself. If you're doing something significant in the community, we want to know about it, and we want to hold you up as a role model of success. Because when we elevate one of you, then it encourages other people to do the same thing. This is National Scouting Month, and we're going to be doing some things in recognition of scouting, and if there's anything personally I can do to help you plan for your future, just come on up and talk to me, okay?
And can I just add a little bit to that question? Also, I'm an entrepreneur myself, and in order for the job future of DeKalb County to be successful, it's important for the youth to understand what entrepreneurship is. Is there something being taken care of in that manner?
Yeah, I would get together with Workforce Development Department right here, and let them, and our Director of Economic Development, and let them get your information. They're going to come up to you afterwards, so you won't have to hunt them down and get your information, provide you with some resources, okay? You're going to get the last question over here, and then, ma'am, you'll get the last question on that side.
Hi, my name is Melissa Pollak. How are you?
Hi, I'm fine, and you?
Good. I just wanted to make a couple of brief points tonight about the animal shelter. Don't want to beat a dead horse. I know that we need to work with the Commissioners as well as your office.
You're running a very effective campaign, and I appreciate it.
So, what I'd like to say tonight is, I understand that the Commissioners must vote to approve the funds that you recommend, but when they approve the funds for those positions, I'm asking that the CFO's office utilize the funds to fill those positions. I'm also asking for the DeKalb County Government to partner with the nonprofits in this county that work with animals all day long, to give them the ability to bring in animals that are healthy and that can be adopted. Because what's happening is, the nonprofits are doing their best to keep up with this in DeKalb County, and to put a good face forward as a leader in this county, but what's happening is, the animals of DeKalb Animal Shelter are coming to them sick. So, what's happening is, it's a vicious cycle, and people are adopting animals from DeKalb County Animal Shelter, but their dogs may or may not be sick, which is, again, costing that person almost $1,000. So, what's happening is, you may have a revolving door, you may have had five days of adoption, but you could have adopted 100 dogs, and 50 of those are coming back, because people cannot afford $1,000 to make an animal well. So, those were the points that I'm bringing out tonight. I think there are tons of people in this community that would stand up and come and volunteer at the shelter. They would do the right thing. It happens all over the major cities in the United States, and I think it can happen here. So, I'm asking for everybody to cooperate and do the right thing.
Yeah, thank you very much. I like those ideas, and very much, we work in partnership, because we're able to stretch public dollars that way, so, thank you. And if you want to leave your information, Joe Alvarado is standing right behind you. He'll get that information, so we can make sure you stay engaged, okay? And monitor our progress, okay? Thank you. Yes, ma'am, last question.
Okay. Hello, Mr. CEO. My name is Ena Hall. I'm here in Arbor Glen Subdivision, but I have a couple of questions, just two, quick three.
Yes, Ms. Hall.
I see in your little magazine here, this perimeter, the center, looks very nice, very nice, and all these businesses and restaurants. What is going on up here at this mall up here, where we live?
Yeah, we've, you're looking at, I think that might be the report that came from Georgia Trend Magazine. It was an excerpt from Georgia Trend Magazine that they put, or it may be from ours, but again, the perimeter community had a jumpstart in terms of when development began out there. It also had the advantage, just like Stonecrest, Stonecrest invested millions of, I mean, the county invested millions of dollars in Stonecrest to get Stonecrest jump-started. I was on the county's Development Authority when we started that, and we continued that when I was the county commissioner, and we've continued to move that forward. But we were also doing that for the perimeter area long before Stonecrest was even on the map. So, understand, Stonecrest has a jumpstart. They've created a perimeter CID, which means it's a community improvement district, where the commercial property owners are all investing their own. They're self-taxing, they're taxing themselves, and putting the money back into the community up there. There's a process to begin, something similar in the Stonecrest area. In fact, the good news is that just about a week ago, I think last week it was, Charles, we just got a grant. I'm looking at my director, Charles, I'm not calling you Charles, Ms. Hall, but Charles Wylie's behind you. We got a grant. We were one of a handful of communities that got a significant-sized grant for that area, more federal money coming into DeKalb County, for a livable communities initiative in the Stonecrest area. And I think that was eight, somewhere between $80,000 or $100,000? Was it $100,000? For that Stonecrest Mall to begin a community planning effort. So, you know, again, if you think about the fact that they didn't start at the same time, how far the Stonecrest Mall has come, and then we're making some steady progress in that area.
But at the same time, I see quite a few of the businesses leaving too. What are we doing to attract more businesses?
Charles, you want to talk about that? Since he's...
You know, the mall is based on spending, not on investment. I mean, and so, when people are out of work, you don't have great retail sales. We met with Cadillac Fairview and some of the other mall occupants, as well as other business owners, to really come up with a development plan that attracts businesses. The fact is, retail is not an economic development tool, it's a demand from the public who have jobs. So, as you create more jobs, retail is stronger. And so, what we've seen is, 15 years ago, Stonecrest was built, and it's gone through one of the worst economies ever, and so, everywhere you go, I mean, major stores are leaving perimeter. So, it's not unique to Stonecrest.
And on the job creation front, not only have we done $100 million of new job inducement in DeKalb County, I talked about one DeKalb Works program that's going to create over 4,700 jobs between now and 2015, targeted to DeKalb County citizens, and the redevelopment of the GM plant, which we've estimated will create 9,000 new jobs.
And I'm going to ask you a question about the DeKalb County Works, because you just had this little young lady right here telling me about the program for the kids. Now, when I spoke with her, the program for the kids are income requirements. A lot of us, well, I don't, we don't meet those income requirements, we're above those income requirements in this area, and our kids don't get to participate. Now, my money's going into these programs, but my children aren't being able to take advantage of it.
And that's because those programs are federally driven. One, the DeKalb Works is not being federally driven, it's a locally driven and created program, and so, there won't be any income requirements. But in order to be hired, understand, it won't be the DeKalb County Government hiring, the DeKalb County Government will be awarding contracts to people who'll be actually digging up the streets, repairing the sewer pipes, repairing the wastewater treatment plants, and they're going to need trained workers. So, we're already training people using Georgia Piedmont Technical College, is it Georgia Piedmont, Georgia Piedmont Technical College, Goodwill Industries, the Urban League, the National Urban League, and the Urban League of Greater Atlanta. Organizations like that are going to be helping to train people, put them in the database, so that we will tell these people, in exchange for getting a contract from the DeKalb County and doing the work, you got to go to that database first and hire, look for people to hire out of that database, not based on income, but based on, and our unions are going to be working with us, based on the fact that those people are trained and ready to do the work. And some of them are going to be construction jobs, some of them are going to be hiring white-collar work, but it will be good work.
And how do I advise the people in my area and in my neighborhoods how to get their names on that list?
Contact the, go to that jobs bus right out there and register tonight.
Well, I don't need to register. I'm saying, how do I advise?
Contact the Office of Workforce Development. Give us the number there, please. Okay, give it to everybody, so everybody can have it.
People can visit website dekalbworkforce.org to register for one DeKalb Works jobs.
Okay, all right, excuse me? Okay, the next town hall is February the 29th, which is next Tuesday, next Wednesday, at Torriday School. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for your questions. Thank you for your civic engagement. Come early, get on the jobs bus. Make sure you tell your neighbors and friends register to vote, and thank you for your time and attention, everyone. Have a good evening.